I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education regular meeting agenda on September 20th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off your cell phones at this time and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of all.
Next is the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishanabee people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishanabee people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation in a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call. Dana Cawkins?
Here.
Tim Motecur?
Here.
Sheila Murphy?
Here.
Jessica Dernigan?
Here.
Courtney Segman?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to change or add? Not seeing any? Next is the Student Board of Education Representative Report by Izzy Goodrich.
My name is Izzy Goodrich and I'm the Vice President of External Communications on the E-Board for Mount Pleasant High School, and I'm just going to let you know about some of the things we've been working on lately. So, we recently selected our homecoming court, which is the freshman class of 2025 is Elizabeth Rainey and Jason Anderson. The class of 2024 is Giselle Wheaton and Toby Sterns. Class of 2023 is Ryan Zerowski and Jared Kremshreider. And then the class of 2022, we have Alexia Widrigg and Corey Davis, Nola Boyle and Logan Loyah-Magellans, Dante Wilson and Ryan McIntyre, Aurora Passmore and Kobe Reimer, and Maya Northrup and Kyle Seitzma. So, that's our homecoming court, and we're also planning on selecting king and queen next week. And then we've also been planning a lot of homecoming, which is coming up soon. We're planning mock rocks for each class, the Royal Ball, the Assembly, and the Parade. And we've also been advertising everything. And we've also selected our homecoming judges, who are Amanda Carey, Alexia Kane, Len Klakalak, Luke Eble Jr., and our own board member Dana Cawkins. And then we also are continuing to have themes for our home football games, and we're also very happy to be in person. So, yeah, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is the Superintendent Report.
Good evening, everyone. Let me pull up my report and we will get started. First this evening, as promised, I will give you an update on where we are with COVID-related situations in our district. First, a number of active cases. This is hot off the presses, just a couple of hours ago, if I can make this maybe a little bit bigger so y'all can see it. We have for you a breakdown of student cases and staff cases. This is current. So, if you'll remember, when you look at my cumulative cases on the website, that looks different because that does show every case that has started, that we've had since school has started. This graph here shows you, or I'm sorry, this chart here just shows you a number of current active cases. I know we're closely watching Mount Pleasant Middle School right now, and I can report that six of those cases, as of tomorrow morning, will no longer be active cases as they go through the cycle. Next, I know that we've had a lot of questions regarding the number of mask exemption forms that we've received as a district. We are accepting medical exemptions, and as you can see, the number is not large. I want to be sure to note out that we have one shared staff member between Ganyard and Vowles. She's counted on both of those areas. And then we have one staff exemption that is a sub that we've listed under McGuire. So, those are the forms that we have. Those forms are readily available in any school office should any parent or community member want to see that form. Next, just as promised, we're looking at the mask protocol, which is the same chart, I was just trying to make it a little bit bigger, which is the same chart that we have used for the last couple of weeks now, looking at where we are with the level of community transmission. As of this week, Isabelle County is still in high transmission, and that means that for this week, all students and staff will be required to wear masks at all time. And I do include links on this information that show where we've gotten it from, which is from the CDC website, and then information on the specific number of cases from our district and from the Health Department, and there's the link there to the district Some things that I think are important to note about all of this. First of all, as you all know, last week, we did make the decision to move one classroom at Fancher Elementary to virtual instruction. That was because of the number of classes in that, or I'm sorry, the number of cases in that particular classroom. That is the second classroom we've had to move to virtual instruction. One was right after Labor Day at Mount Pleasant Middle School. As you are also all aware, last Thursday, we made the very difficult decision to move Mount Pleasant Middle School to virtual instruction through next Monday. So, students will return to school in both cases on Monday, September 27th, one week from today. We made both of those decisions in consultation with the Health Department, knowing that putting a pause on in-person instruction will likely pause the spread of cases and hopefully bring our students back into a healthier and more safe environment. You'll note on here, we are doing a meal distribution tomorrow for those middle school students and families that aren't able to get lunch and breakfast from our school this week. They'll be picking up five days' worth of meals, so breakfast and lunch for all five days, and that will be distributed from behind Mount Pleasant Middle School between 11:00 and 1:00 tomorrow. And there was correspondence that was sent out to all middle school families, so they have that information. That's really all I have this evening for my COVID update. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. I have two questions for you, Jennifer. The first one is, is there any situation that would cause us to delay the reopening of the middle school? Are we waiting for the numbers to go down before we do that, or are we just saying a one-week pause to avoid more transmission?
So, I think that what was most concerning last week was the daily number of cases that we received. And with the lack of testing and testing availability in our community, right now it is taking two to three days to get a test result back. So, what we found is that we were sort of in this cycle where students were being exposed, testing, but then it was three days later before we knew if they were testing positive or not, and then another set of students was testing positive. So, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you how many cases we had today from the middle school. It isn't an update that I'll be sending out this evening, but it was not six, which is where we were on Thursday. So, as long as we continue to trend in that direction with the guidance of the Health Department, I believe we will be able to open next Monday, or return to face-to-face instruction, I should say.
Thank you. The second question I had was for athletics. Are we, that was the only part that I wasn't clear where we stood with our universal masking on athletics, if they included our athletes at the high school and middle school?
Yep. So, right now, while the middle school is in virtual learning, we are, we have paused all athletics at the middle school. With regards to the mask mandate that you all put in place at the last board meeting, because the majority of our fall athletics are outside, students are able to practice and compete as long as they are outside without a mask. For our one inside sport that's happening right now, which is volleyball, we're asking that the students practice with masks on, sit on the bench with masks on, but when they are in competition, they are allowed to be maskless. And we're asking that our officials do that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. The next section of my report this evening is a report on educational goals, and I just need to find that up here. So, as you remember, last year, the district was required to report educational goals as a part of our Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. This year, we didn't have to do a plan, but the state still wants us to do very specific goals. So, what we did as a leadership team, we took our goals from last year. We did break them down a little bit more than they were broken down than last year. Last year, they were very general, just for K8. This year, they're building specific, so we're looking at a group of goals for K2 buildings, a group of goals for our 3-5 buildings, and a group of goals for our middle school. The other part of the goals that is part of the requirement is that we have to have goals that are related to student growth and to student achievement. So, as you scroll through these goals, what you will see is that the first set, so right now, I have the K2 set pulled up. The first set of goals are related to their own personal growth on the benchmark assessments that we provide, which for all of our K8 students is going to be NWEA. So, what we're saying here is that by mid-year, we want all students to show growth from fall to winter on NWEA in reading, ELA, and in math. By the end of the year, we would like to say that at least 80% of our students have met their projected growth goal in reading and in math. So, that's the first chart there. The second chart is focused on achievement. So, last year, when we looked at achievement, we reported out the number of students that scored at or above the norm RIT for their grade level. That's a score on NWEA. So, this year, since we have to do an achievement and a growth goal, with the achievement goal, what we're looking at is again, by mid-year, we want all of our students to have shown progress. Progress will look different for every student, but we want them all to show progress. And then by the end of the year, we want our students to score at or above the goal, the RIT score for their grade level. The percentage that we've put in for each grade grouping is slightly different because it is based on their performance last year. So, what we're saying is we want to make sure that our goals are reasonable. We're stretching just a little bit, but we know that there's a lot of things going on. So, we have the goals to maintain and improve just slightly in those areas. So, you'll notice next is the 3-5 goals for Fancher and McGuire. Again, broken down the exact same way, goals related to growth, goals related to achievement. I'm just going to go kind of fast through those because they are the same. And then again, the same building goals for Mount Pleasant Middle School for 6th through 8th grade, again, showing growth in reading and ELA and in math, and then scoring above their projected growth goal by the end of the year. Finally, when we look at Mount Pleasant High School, our goal is consistent with what it's been through the District School Improvement Plan, through the MYKIP process, that we're really focused on all students becoming college and career-ready in their core academic subjects. And for the high school level, that would be measured by the PSAT, the SAT, or the M- Some other pieces that are important to note here is that all the goals that we have here are established based on an extension of the 2021 Extended COVID Learning Plan. That is a part of the legal requirement that we have to take last year's goals and bring them into this year. As I mentioned earlier, the goals are also established, keeping in mind our District School Improvement Plan and the MYKIP goals. MYKIP is the new district process that we've been learning from the state. And then finally, a big focus for all of our students will continue to be social-emotional learning. So, at the DK through 8th grade level, we are invested in the Second Steps curriculum, where students have regular lessons that are focused on social-emotional growth. At the high school level, it looks a little different, but there's still that solid focus on social-emotional learning and mental wellness. For these goals, the legal requirement is that they're reported out two, three times a year. So, this evening, I'm just telling you, these are our goals. In February, I will give you an update, and then in June, I'll give you another update at the end of the year. Do you all have questions about our goals or this process?
I have one question. Yeah. It's about social learning, too.
So, it's different in different grade levels, right? So, for DK through 5th grade, they're being taught by the classroom teacher. So, classroom teachers have the curriculum kits. We're able also this year to purchase a project, wear digital licenses for Second Steps, so we have that. In, at Mount Pleasant Middle School, 6th through 8th, that does happen in their advisory time. So, again, they've got that digital access to the curriculum so that they're always sharing that. Across the board, our students are learning social-emotional pieces through their counselors, through Project Aware program, through our at-risk counselors, through school social workers. So, it's a variety of different things, but we have those structured lessons in place in K5 and then 6th, 8th. Other questions about our goals? Okay, I'm not seeing any either. Okay. So, the last item on my, on my report this evening is a PSC update. As you all know, we have been working closely with Linda and with Katie Hoyle and Erin King, who are our co-chairs of the PSC Committee, Professional Study Committee. And I have a statement that is a shared statement from myself and from the Professional Study Committee that I'd like to reach you all this evening. At Mount Pleasant Public Schools, the Professional Study Committee, PSC, Curriculum Review Process intentionally includes a variety of stakeholders in an ongoing effort to look at the curriculum taught and the resources used. Our regular cycle process for all content areas includes the review of Michigan standards in comparison to our curriculum documents, the reflection on how diversity of cultures and academic needs are addressed or represented in resources, and identification of appropriate staff development. According to State Superintendent Dr. Michael Rice, critical race theory is not a curriculum, and it is not a pre-K-12 curriculum. It is, in fact, an academic umbrella of reflections and writings developed in higher education in colleges, universities, law schools, and graduate schools since the mid-1970s to consider the elements and impacts of racism, and particularly institutional racism, on our country incidentary. Mount Pleasant Public Schools follows the Michigan State-approved standards in all content areas, including social studies and language arts. These standards do not include critical race theory, and Mount Pleasant Public Schools does not teach critical race theory. These standards do include factual, historical information about race and racism. PSC has every intention to continue supporting a highly reflective curriculum review process for all curriculum areas at the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. That's the end of my report.
Next is the Requested Financial Report.
Good evening. I have for you all the requested financial reports for General Fund and Special Service Funds, Revenue and Expenditure Comparison Report. This is for the month ending August 2020 and August 2021. For General Fund, revenues are at 5% of budget this year compared to 6% last year, and expenditures are at 12% of budget this year compared to 4% last year. Those numbers are a little bit skewed still. The 20, the 21, 22, the current year expenditures are still a little high because the reversals need to happen still for the July and August salary and benefits that were accrued back into last year. And then last year's revenue was slightly higher because we did in August receive a large COVID grant. We did receive a large COVID grant in August of last year, so that's why the revenues are slightly higher last year. For the Special Service Funds, revenue is at 78% of budget compared to 0% last year, and expenditures are at 0%. This is a self-sustaining sports, and this is really just some incoming money from the new Pam Pam team that we weren't quite sure how to budget for yet, so that will be adjusted at the first budget revision. The Children's Learning Center, revenue is at 17% compared to 0% last year, and expenditures are at 16% compared to 5% last year. For the Nurse Testing Program, there's no activity in revenue or expenditures yet for this, for either year in August. For the Food Service Fund, revenue is at 2% this year compared to 0% last year, and expenditures are at 1% this year compared to 0% last year. And then for the School Store, again, there's no activity in the month of August for either years. For the General Fund Treasurers Report, on July 31st, we had a cash balance of $4.8 million. We had income in the month of August of $8.4 million and disbursements of $3 million. That brings us to balance on August 31st of $10.2 million. Remember, this is the time of year where that starts to look a little big, but we don't receive state aid payment in the month of October, so that's what this helps cover. For the Debt Retirement Fund, July 31st, we had a cash balance of $111,000, small amount of interest income of $316, and no disbursements for the month of August. That brings us to balance on August 31st of $111,000. And then for the Capital Projects Fund, on July 31st, we had a cash balance of $2.5 million. We had interest income of $59 and no disbursements for the month of August. So, that brings us to balance on August 31st of $2.5 million. Thank you.
I have a question.
Under, on our comparisons that we have, where we have your date compared to your date last year at the same period, and then we get to see percentages of how they both are playing side by side, to give everyone some context. We get this report on every board meeting or every, at least monthly. I was noticing that there's a significant increase in the, some of the expenditures as compared to last year, so especially like under salaries and things. So, I didn't know if there was a fact that was being caused just because of the COVID, the way COVID's being booked, or why there was a significant difference, which means a significant increase in this fiscal year.
Sure. Part of it would be because of COVID, if we have extra, like before extended day classrooms or like before school coverage. But most of it is because of what I explained with the reversals still need to happen this year to reverse out the salary and benefits from July and August that were applied to last year's fiscal year.
Thank you. I explained that.
Is there any other questions for Ginger? Okay. Moving on is the Acknowledgement of Correspondence. This is correspondence that has been sent to the whole board. We have received correspondence from Andrea McKinney, Jennifer Shiza, Stacy Lim, Eric Sharecover, Xanthah Karp, Lisa De Meyer, Gregory Chlorus, Heidi Rocha, Phil Hertzler, Jessica Lapp, Robert and Denise Fanning, Marcy Stout, Jennifer Shiza, Amanda Hutchins, Audrey Stout, Phil Hertzler, Mickey Christiansen, Roxanne Flea, Danielle Weber, Jennifer Martin, Ryan Douglas, and Lynn E. Simmons. Next, we have chosen to move up the Citizens Request to address the board, so I will call your name, and you can come to the microphone. As usual, you have your three minutes, and we will start with Bree Mogamberg.
Good evening. My name is Bree Mogamberg. I am from Mount Pleasant. We all know that I no longer have a middle schooler in this district. I do still have a high schooler in the district. And as a parent, believe it or not, aside from COVID, I want to commend and say thank you to the principal of the high school that I just met with because of a person that is staffed and works in the high school that has done some very unsafe and damaging things to my family, and they really did help come up with a safety plan to help my daughter feel more safe in school. So, beyond that, though, enough is enough. So, we have a middle school that has just closed down, and I've looked and looked, and I don't know if anyone else can find it, but I don't seem to be able to find the magic number in which we closed down because of COVID cases, and not just COVID cases that are active, but cumulative COVID cases. If you're not aware, that most, all people that have got this, that I know, are very mild to moderate and, you know, moderately severe outcomes that come from this, and most, all of these kids that I know have recovered very, very, very quickly. Beyond COVID, though, because we know I could go on and on and on about this, I think it's really important that everybody here addresses a really simple word. It's a little big, so bear with me. Compassion. Compassion is a two-way street. So, when some people say mask up to protect others, I'll tell you right now, I'm compassionate, and I teach my children to be compassionate by making sure that they're aware of someone's mask, respect their space, respect that they need space. But on the flip side to that, compassion is a deep understanding for everyone and respect from the other side and people that think differently, and this seems to be really, really problematic for a lot of people in this community, is compassion is understanding why other people have a concern for their own health, and that includes with masking. And every adult in this room should be well-aware of what compassion is. So, in that two-way street, I just want to read very quickly a list of reasons why people don't want to wear a mask, you know, and that doesn't just include myself standing up here, my daughters, who are also exempt from wearing a mask, and I do want to say that I appreciate the fact that we are allowed to get a mask exemption to protect their health. But reasons that other people need to be compassionate for people that don't want to do such things, such as wearing a mask. Masks can cause harm. Masks adversely affect respiratory physiology and function. They lower oxygen levels in the blood. Therefore, COVID becomes more dangerous when blood oxygen levels decline. Viruses are even more capable of invading cells when arterial oxygen, oxygen levels decline. Masks raise carbon dioxide levels in blood. I would have loved to have got one of those readers so that you could all see me talking with a mask on, but again, it's really hard for me to function wearing a mask, so I didn't do that. Another one, mask trap.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. Mask trap, exhale viral pathogens, and also on-train and inappropriate management of face masks is extremely, extremely dangerous. I'm almost done. I want it to be known that it was said, that recall and reclaim the schools, that reclaiming the schools is a declaration of dominance and trying to take control, but I want to clarify that. The truth and the fact is that we want to reclaim.
You have your three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. I'm almost done, Tim. We know where this goes. You let other people talk for over two minutes. Just let me finish up, okay? I'm on my last sentence. Thank you.
Please finish your comments.
Recall and reclaim. The truth to the fact is that we want to reclaim this school board by a means of restoration to return, return our schools to be suitable and be suitable to use with tolerance and respect to all. Enough is enough. We all need to be tolerant to each other, and that includes being compassionate to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Board of Education members. Thank you for your time and your service to our school and community. My name is Heidi Rocha. I'm a public school teacher in a neighboring district. I am a Mount Pleasant resident, and I am the parent of two children who have attended Mount Pleasant Public Schools and one who is currently attending. My youngest is a 6th grader at the middle school. At the beginning of the school year, we were very disappointed with the mask mandate for children under 12. I knew that my daughter struggled to wear a mask. I talked to her about it and planned to get a medical exemption signed. However, she said that she wanted to give it a try because she didn't want to be embarrassed being one of the only students without a mask. Well, she went the first three weeks wearing a mask, and guess what? She still got COVID. The mask didn't stop her from getting COVID, but I'll tell you what it did do. It did cause her daily headaches, she struggled to breathe, and it increased her anxiety level. So, I will be going for that medical exemption soon. Yesterday was her first day out of quarantine from having COVID. Of course, I say the word COVID, and people's responses are, oh, no, I'm so sorry. Is she okay? How bad was it? Well, I appreciate the concern, but she's doing just fine. Even, my daughter is not vaccinated. She has asthma and- She has asthma and allergies, so could be considered higher risk. Even with those factors combined, she had a very mild case of COVID. She had one day of minimal symptoms, and the rest of the time, she was bored and upset that she couldn't go to school and see her friends. I wanted to share this with you because it seems like there's so much fear that's pumped out in the media and the news headlines that make us think that every case of COVID results in severe symptoms and hospitalization, and that is not the case, especially with children. According to Mayo Clinic dot com, most children who become infected with COVID-19 have mild symptoms. According to the CDC on Heritage dot com with public health information, point two percent of deaths are from ages twenty-five and younger. So why are we masking our children, do you ask? To protect the more vulnerable populations? I might think that would be okay if wearing a mask didn't have such a negative impact on my child and many others. Did you know that there isn't a study that exists that, on the long-term impact of children wearing masks? I bet we'll see one in the future. We assume it's fine because most children don't complain, but please keep in mind that there are many children, like my daughter, who are silently struggling. Please remember that their compliance doesn't mean that they're not negatively affected, and it doesn't mean it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark Perry.
I'm Mark Perry. Excuse me. I wanted to read some excerpts from an article that Dr. James Meehan, M.D., out of Tulsa, Oklahoma, wrote earlier this year. Title of the article is "If Masks Don't Work, Why Do Surgeons Use Them?" Now, Dr. Meehan is a surgeon, and he's performed over ten thousand surgical procedures in his medical career, and is a former medical journal editor. He writes, "Since the beginning of the pandemic, I've read hundreds of studies on the science of medical masks. Based on extensive review and analysis, there is no question in my mind that healthy people should not be wearing surgical or cloth masks. Nor should we be recommending universal masking to all members of the population. Universal masking is not supported by the highest level of scientific evidence. The premise that surgeons wearing masks serves as evidence that masks must work to prevent viral transmission is a fallacy," these are his words. "Although surgeons do wear masks to prevent their respiratory droplets from contaminating the surgical field and the exposed internal tissues of our surgical patients, that is about as far as the analogy goes. The COVID-19 pandemic is about viral transmission. Surgical and cloth masks do not prevent viral transmissions. They do nothing." Should I repeat that? They don't prevent viral transmission. He goes on to say, "This is why masks have never been recommended for use during the seasonal flu outbreaks, epidemics, or previous pandemics." He goes on further to say that the failure of the scientific literature today to support medical masks for influenza and all the viruses is also why Fauci, the Surgeon General, the CDC, the WHO, and pretty much every infectious disease expert stated that wearing masks won't prevent transmission of SARS-CoV-2. And although Fauci and others flip-flopped and later changed their recommendations, the science did not change. If a surgeon were sick, especially with a viral infection, they would not perform surgery as they know a mask would not stop the virus." He goes on to say that "studies show the detrimental effects of mask-wearing, lower levels of arterial oxygen, and the promotion of rebreathing, carbon dioxide within the mask. All of these have a negative impact on the surgeon's physiology and the surgeon's performance." Surgeons only wear masks, fresh sterile masks. They change them out constantly. They never reuse surgical masks. We never wear cloth masks.
You have your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Almost done. He goes on to say, "The frequent touching and constant reuse of masks will only increase contamination and are more likely to increase transmission of disease." We all can see our kids touching our masks, you see it at the grocery store. Lastly, how could you possibly stop the spread of viral disease when you're not covering the eyes with a mask? I'd like to ask trustee Pangol. Are you a surgeon?
You have your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Are you a virology expert? Are you a practicing physician who sees COVID patients? Drop the mask mandate.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Heather Chalmers Beardsley. I live in Mount Pleasant, and I have three children. Thank you, Mount Pleasant Public School Board, for the important work that you are doing. Thank you for relying on scientific data and expert advice, not conspiracy theories, to keep the Mount Pleasant Public School students and staff safe. These actions to promote safety directly affect the wellness of our small community. This is a public health issue, and I thank you for doing your part. I would like to acknowledge, publicly acknowledge, my support for Amy Bond, Courtney Stegman, and Dr. Willene Pangol. Thank you for your work and your dedication to our district. In conclusion, I encourage the people engaged in curriculum review to continue examining the language and labels used in the literature that is used in the classroom. Whose histories are acknowledged and whose are hidden? How do we increase representation, access, and therefore equity? Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, all of you, huge thank you. I mean this from the bottom of my heart for what you're doing. It's commendable beyond measure, and I mean that. Thank you for everything you've done in the last year and a half. I want to continue to, continue to thank you for the raise you gave us a few years back, us subs. My name's Faith Freedom. I've been a sub ni-, this is my ninth year subbing at the school. I love it until now. It's been rough, as you can well imagine. We used to be at seventy, which was a day, which you raised because it worked out to be nine-thirty an hour, which was below minimum wage. We're up to eighty-five now. We don't usually work prep, but it's expected this year. They don't even ask us. They just tell us where we're going. So we're earning less money back where we started from, we're not earning as much. No one likes to earn less money. Other schools are paying ninety-five to a hundred a day. Teachers that still have prep, they don't have to work, they're prepping that hour, are currently pulling up the slack, and they're getting paid. We're not. My point is to raise the sub pay or at least to pay for the prep. Also, if we sign onto a job for a full-day pay that's supposed to be a half-day, clearly it says in the sub notes, half-day, we know that, but we want a full day. We work a half a day, it says it's a full day. We work and they say it's only half-day. Well, could you have changed it? Because then we're stuck with a full day, we get paid for half a day, and we lose money. That needs to be changed like ASAP, because I lost a half a day of work last week, couldn't work anywhere because they didn't put it in right. I'm sorry if I'm a little disjointed right now because I'm a little upset with the toxicity that's at the office at the high school. We don't, I've been there nine years and lately, a year and a half, this, this year alone, my first day back to the high school, I cried myself to sleep because I was treated so poorly. Not by the students, not by the teachers. I love the teachers and I love the students, but nobody tells us thank you. I've not heard that yet. I hear it from the teachers, I hear it from the students, that's what keeps me coming back.
You have your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
And I just wanted to say one last thing. Let's try. Let's just try to spread some kindness. It can be contagious if we get this wave going of being kind to one another. Tell people good morning, thank you for your job. That's all. If you can think about raising our pay, that would be more than great for all the subs. Thank you for your time and all the great work you guys do. I mean it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Lapp. I'm a Union Township resident, and I have a senior at the high school. Some facts that I learned this week that I didn't know before. George Washington required smallpox inoculation of all soldiers in the Continental Army during the Revolutionary War. In the U.S. right now, the number of deaths caused by COVID-19 has reached the number of deaths caused by the flu in nineteen eighteen. And the Morning Sun is reporting ninety-eight new COVID outbreaks in the K through twelve schools across Michigan. So thank you for leading our district at this difficult time. Thank you for prioritizing safety for our students and for our community. And I just wanted to read something from the journal Nature, which is the premier biology journal in the, in the world. To be clear, the science supports using masks, with recent studies suggesting that they could save lives in different ways. Research shows that they cut down the chances of both transmitting and catching the coronavirus, and some studies hint that the masks might reduce the severity of infection if people do catch the disease. So again, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Next is John Kiodini.
All this divisiveness has really taken its toll on me. So yesterday, I happened to read a column by Mitch Albom, for some of you have read it yesterday. Too bad, you're going to hear it again. Last week, Jewish people celebrated Yom Kippur, or the Day of Atonement. Part of the tradition is to approach those in your life and say you're sorry for any hurt you've caused them this past year, and to seek forgiveness. It got me thinking how rarely we do that in this country. We have an annual Thanksgiving, but not a forgive-me day. Truth is, we don't forgive much anymore. We scold, we scream, we obliterate, we wipe you from existence. Cancel culture is pretty much the direct opposite of forgiveness, and I'm afraid we're becoming so used to the former, we're forgetting the latter. To err is human, but to forgive is dumb, weak, and beneath us. That's who we're becoming. For example, I'm pretty sure when we reach the last moments of lives, who we voted for president will hardly be the most important thing to us. But how many of us today refuse to forgive others their political choices? There are still families that won't speak to each other over Donald Trump or Hillary Clinton. That's just sad. Vaccines? Good Lord. We have turned people who choose not to get vaccinated into creatures who don't deserve to live. A late-night TV host recently suggested that if a hospital had to give its last bed to a vaccinated person or an unvaccinated one, they should tell the unvaccinated one, rest in peace, wheezy. That's considered humor? These days, one offensive comment is unforgivable. A suggestion that all lives matter. Banishment. A Halloween costume judgment. An unwanted peck on the cheek. A dumb tweet from when you were a teenager. Dismissal, expulsion, exile. It's not a hammer of justice anymore, it's an atomic bomb. We want those who offend us to be vaporized. The worst part is, we keep telling ourselves we are righteous in this approach, that there is only one way to be, one correct side of history, one view on racial and religious issues, but there is no righteousness in such stubbornness. There's nothing noble about telling your friends, if you voted for insect political, excuse me, insert political candidate, do not come to my home. Nothing to be proud of for unleashing a Twitter bomb on an opponent as if releasing a pack of rabid hounds. The sin of being stiff-necked is one of the things Jewish people atone for on Yom Kippur. Boy, has that found a home in America. Between our stiff necks over politics, guns, vaccines, schools, and free speech, we should all be wrapped in heating pads.
You've had your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Since when did forgiveness become a bad thing? Since when did compassion and allowance for others' mistakes mean you were soft? The anger level of our country has gone from simmer to boil. We steam and belittle and dismiss those we disagree with, then move on to the next foe. Nowhere is this more on display than the...
You have your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Beg your pardon?
You have your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, I too would like to say thank you so very much to all of you sitting here, week after week, month after month, with such difficult work. I'm, I brought a visual for folks to see, and, you know, the folks back here as well. This is an image called the Circle of Courage, and we were introduced to it as a staff through Project Aware, and it's so beautiful to me because in the middle, we have the image of the medicine wheel, which is an ancient teaching coming from tribal communities all across this turtle island that we share. And four words: mastery, belonging, independence, and generosity. The, you, it's, it's thought to be that all humans, all of us, have four basic human needs, starting with belonging in the eastern door when we're born. We need to know that we belong somewhere, to someone, or to some group. Independence is that ability to be in charge of your own body, your own mind, your own voice. Generosity is that, that piece of thinking about others, not just yourself. Not so easy. And then mastery, when things are difficult and you just stick with them anyways. Maybe when you're little, like learning to tie your shoes. Maybe when you're big, like trying to solve these big issues that we keep talking about here. And I'm so glad that someone brought up the idea of compassion, a few people did. This whole wheel is all about compassion, and I'm so happy that I work at Pullen Elementary, where this is our North Star. This is what we talk to children about, and as we become trauma-informed, and I'm realizing, wow, I live in a country that's had trauma since the first time the colonizers, colonizers arrived. They've been really kind of traumatizing people, that's a little bit why we say the land acknowledgement. And so if this is the way to build resilience, this circle of courage, it becomes my North Star. And because we've been introduced to it, and I, I live this, well, I don't live it, I'm trying to live it, I felt like the whole community should know, because I keep getting trained on this, but not everyone else is, and so I'm just bringing it here to show you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Ray McLean. Next is Ray McLean.
Hello? Okay. So, hi, my name is Rayland McLean and I'm here to tell you how I feel about masks. Um, they make me feel uncomfortable. They, and they also make me feel kind of sick sometimes. But they also can make me feel like I want to pass out and throw up. And sometimes I can't breathe in the masks. My sister Riley wants to say, on Thursday, September 16th, M- M- Mount Pleasant Middle School closed. Went, she went home upset and cried for hours because a student, as a student, she felt like her education did not matter to those who's closed the middle us down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Marcy Rodriguez.
Is it okay if I touch the microphone? Yeah? Okay, I just can't stand here and be like stiff, I have to move around. Okay, so I don't have a script. I just came here with it on my heart because a friend from Midland had, you know, a board meeting in their town and she's like, will you come here and support us? She said, unless you got one going on in your town, you need to go and support that. And I was like, you know what, you're right, because I'm a massage therapist, I don't have anybody that makes me wear a mask. My kid doesn't complain about wearing a mask that much, she thinks it's not good for us, she knows that, you know, it's whatever, but she just does it because she's a compliant child. Um, but first I want to back up and say thank you and every single person who's a teacher. Like every time I meet a teacher, I'm like, I freaking bow at your feet because you help us raise our kids. I know every single person in this room is here because they care about our kids, you guys care about our kids, I know that. But everybody has a different belief system. Some people believe that masks make you safer, some people don't. So we need to respect each other's belief systems. And if you want to wear a mask or you want to make your child wear a mask, that's fine. But don't make people that don't want to wear masks breathe their own bodily waste. That's carbon dioxide is a bodily waste, it's supposed to leave our bodies. And when we breathe out, waste goes out with it. And if we wear a mask, we're breathing our bodily waste and it makes us sick, it lowers the immune system. How about we teach people to boost their immune system? Take some vitamin C. And also, oh, it's just, I don't, I'm not trying to go on and on, but think about like what she said about compassion and respect for other people. These masks, if anything, promote the hand sanitizer. Every time a kid walks in the room, make him hit the hand sanitizer. But they're touching their masks all the freaking time and then they're touching everything and every desk and every doorknob. So it's not going to help. People are still gonna get sick if it's there. So if you're that scared, just stay home, you know? But kids want to go to school, everybody wants to go to school, it's hard to learn from home. I'll stop, but just think about like it's a bodily waste that you are forcing people to breathe and people should have the right to breathe fresh air. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the conclusion of the, um, of the citizens' request to address the board. Next is the consent agenda. Um, on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 7th, 2021, regular mini, meeting minutes and the financial improvement in the form of $1,151,399.10. Is there a motion to approve either of those? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next is resignations.
Good evening. Um, we are sadly saying goodbye to Sandy DeBridge. She is leaving us to pursue an, a degree in administration. So we, uh, we're happy to have her with us for a little while, but she has resigned and is, um, moving on to an administrative position in another district.
Is there a motion to, um, for the resignation of Sandy DeBridge?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes and many well wishes are sent. Next is the Bands of America National Guard from Indianapolis, Indiana.
In your pack of this evening, you do have the field trip paperwork for our Mount Pleasant High School marching band to attend the Bands of America Grand Nationals competition in Indianapolis, Indiana, uh, November 11th through the 13th. I believe I saw Mr. Taiton here, these are in the back. Uh, should you have any questions? This is a field trip that I believe the bands do every other year. Um, but we bring it to the board every year for approval because it is out of state and it is overnight. And, uh, Mr. Taiton and I have been in great correspondence that he knows that we're moving forward with the planning process, knowing that we may have to make changes depending on where we are with the pandemic. But we didn't want to not plan in case we could still be able to go. So they're excited and I know they're working on their fundraising because I bought a band card the other day, so thank you for that.
Okay. All in favor, or sorry, motion?
I move that we approve the overnight for the marching bands and the Grand Nationals.
Seconded.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. We hope you do wonderful, um, at the Grand Nationals. Uh, next is...
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Taiton. Next is the appointment of delegation for the MASB Annual Leadership Conference. So there needs to be two delegates. Um, I know that, uh, I am planning on attending the conference and, uh, Tim is also planning on attending the conference. Is anyone else at this given point in time planning on attending? So is there a motion to have myself and Tim be the delegates for the leadership conference?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Tim and I will be the representatives for that. Next is the hockey cooperative agreement.
Yeah, and that's not a mistake that we left on from the last time. Um, at our last board meeting, we did approve the cooperative agreement between Mount Pleasant Public Schools and several schools. Um, at that time, we did not have a signed agreement from Alma Public Schools, which we do now have. So this evening, we're asking that you would add Alma Public Schools into the cooperative agreement that we approved at the last board meeting.
Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes as well. Next is the Board of Education discussion. This is an opportunity for any board member to discuss an issue or concern that they may have. Is there anything that anyone would like to say at this time? Not seeing any, I move for the meeting to become adjourned. Thank you.